What does it look like in the United States of America? And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible delivers you justice for all.
Director Story.
Yeah.
Director Sarno.
Here.
And Director Reed is here. Nobody has heard from Director Edith. Do I have a motion to? Right to the President's unexcused.
I so move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, we do have relations from the agenda. We won't be having our presentations on recruitment. Companies. So we'll have to schedule those for later days.
We want to table and you want to do a table, you want to table, make a motion to table those and move them to the next one? We want to have them down at the. Where the where the call is the guest presentation portion.
Um, yeah, and we'll get down there. Somebody have conflict of interest with anything on the agenda this evening?
I don't know.
I just, just caught it right now is that. We missed the minutes on the agenda.
Oh, you're right.
Multiple times I missed that, so, so we want to add that.
Well, it is, it's on the consent.
It is consent. Thank you, thank you.
Oh, gosh, give me heart attack.
Okay, um, do we have any correspondence?
None from staff.
Okay. Public comment?
I have a question. Um, so I missed the work sessions and obviously you guys approved to raise the mill levy. To the fifteen. Oh, point oh, oh nine or whatever it is here.
Fifteen point oh seven oh.
Yeah, so I'm just curious as to why the board decided to go ahead and raise the mill levy? When this passed a few years ago, the understanding was it was to offset Gallagher ratcheting down property values. And now that that's been locked in place, I'm curious as to what the. Thinking is behind raising the mill levy when property values are increasing and Gallagher has stayed the same.
I think Ashley could explain.
Do you want to jump in on that? Yes, so the, um, the ballot initiative that was passed. It allows, in the language within that ballot, it allows us to adjust our mill levy. If there is a loss in property tax revenue.
Okay.
And with the adjustment of the residential assessment rate to sixteen or it's like six point. Four nine or something like that, we did not adjust the voter approved residential assessment rate. To match what the state did, so we. Um, we experienced a loss in revenue from top property tax revenue because we didn't adjust the residential assessment rate. So because there was a loss of revenue through the residential assessment rate, we capture that through a mill levy adjustment. So we're not collecting anything more, we're adjusting our mill to capture that lost revenue.
Okay, so why was that, was the residential assessment rate not adjusted? I mean, is that not a? Automatic or voted on or?
No, there's a state residential assessment rate and then we have our voter approved assessment rate.
Okay, so the voter approved assessment rate didn't go up with the same as the state?
Correct, so our voter approved assessment rate is different from the state assessment rate. And because of that, we experienced a loss of property tax revenue.
Okay.
So the language in that ballot initiative gives us the ability to adjust our mill levy. Only enough to offset that loss in property revenue.
I understood that, yeah, I just wasn't sure why. You guys were exercising the option to raise the mill levy.
And it was only to make up the loss, so we're not making anymore, it's only to make up the thing, so our revenue is the same.
But the budget this coming year is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than last year.
Because we had residential growth in the district.
Okay, that was, those were my two questions.
And I can email you our whole presentation about that, that kind of breaks that down if you'd like, Sarah.
I appreciate that.
Explains all that. And what is your address again?
Two zero eight eight four, Calhoun Drive.
And she explains it a lot better than I could ever.
Yeah.
And we didn't, we didn't, so what happened, Sarah, is that first year after that ballot was passed or that, um, initiative. We didn't do any adjustment, we just did our first adjustment this year and we couldn't go back and retroactively try and collect what we didn't collect in the past.
Right.
So we just stated, okay, well, from here moving forward, we're gonna just monitor this annually.
And that was the other reason why I was asking, because you guys haven't raised it last year.
Yes.
Um, and like I said, I know from experience, property values are going up. So I, I didn't know where that gap in revenue was coming from, but it's the residential.
Yes, yep.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh. So as far as the recruiting firms. I'd like to move that to next month's meeting. The presentations. Do I have any comments on that or?
Any motion to do that or just?
We do, we do have two meetings scheduled in February, we have our regular board meeting and then we have a tentative work session. Later in the month, so we could potentially do it at either one.
I would prefer to do it sooner than later, I think if we're gonna get somebody on board, we'll need to get moving on that.
So which ones?
The first three items.
Yeah.
None of those are here.
We had two of the.
Scheduled and.
Yeah, two of the firms and we posted the agenda and then we, two of the three firms had. Um, extenuating circumstances come up where they couldn't attend this today. And so the third firm, he was prepared to present, but he asked, he would, he would much rather wait until. Everybody else is presenting too.
Which makes sense.
Yes.
Personally, I don't see the sense in doing that. Well, since we no longer have an HR person, we don't have a PR person. We only have one staff to help with handling, reviewing. Applications and making sure that everything is handled. In a proper fashion, I think we need the help with at least some of it.
And it's probably prudent, at least here, that bit of those discussions so that, um. We don't enter into a situation where the, the applicants or the resumes or things were coming through the office. If there was, at least those, those options to discuss those opportunities where if there's, if the firms have some level of being willing to collect or.
As, as we have an internal candidate, he can't have anything to do with the process.
Right, I mean, I guess you're assuming that we're going to get tons of applicants.
I'm assuming we will get more than one.
I'm assuming we will. From what Tom did that say?
Well.
So if we only get a few, I don't know why we can't handle it without spending. What, fifty five?
I think the range was from twenty to fifty. I really think we need to at least listen to them. And see if there are. Areas where they can help us, we may not need the whole shoot and match, but I, I really feel like. We don't have. The personnel. To handle it.
Yeah, I, I think we have to be very, um. I think if we accept you very concerned, it's not like we're. Uh, overflowing with funds, so I, I think we have to be very prudent.
Well, I, I don't disagree with that.
So. At the, at the risk of, uh. Yeah, I guess it won't cost anything to listen, um, but beyond that, I, I just have to, I think I'm sort of, you know, a little careless at that. And I'm thinking that the more we can do ourselves and, and trust it and our judgment then.
But one of the first questions I would ask him was what's the minimum they can do? Both work wise and financial wise, I mean. They may, all three may have in mind that this is gonna be a big bomb drawn out. Now, we're hoping it's not gonna be.
No regardless of the money. It just seems to be like we've had a really good chance. Chief Patterson has proven itself in my line all the way around, I can't handle. Finding a better person and why do we need to spend the time, the brain damage and the money? To search for somebody and come back to the person who's proven himself to be.
Because it has to be posted.
Well, I understand that, that doesn't cost any money. We could post it.
And, and where are we getting posted? I mean, I, I certainly don't know where we would post the announcements to get. The attention of good applicants.
Isn't it laid out where it has to be posted? Is it?
Well, there, there are a variety of, of services, like the Colorado State Fire Chiefs Association, there are a lot of services, right? That we can post it, that we posted it before the interim, so and those didn't cost virtually anything, so. That, that satisfies our legal requirement from a posting.
We have to do that, I understand that.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, that, that satisfies that requirement. And beyond that, I think the rest is a, it's a test.
I mean, I don't know if we could. Maybe that's why we need to interview them, but I don't know if we could do the posting and if we're just inundated with applicants, if we hire somebody at that point. Or not? I don't know. I guess. We have to be, we have to do it legal, we have to fulfill our legal requirements and so we like, that's one of those.
Well, I agree.
But do we have to do anything else beyond that?
No.
So you, you don't think you would want to do any, any sort of a, uh. Oh. Scenario or. Multiple interviews or. You think we could just look at, look at the applications and, and have interviews and that's all we need to do?
Legally, yes.
On something.
Legally, yes, but is that sufficient?
When if the board is conducting this process, we'll have to be cautious of the open meeting laws as well, so any. Of some of that stuff may, anytime you guys want to review the applications and things like that, we'll. Have to have it as a posted meeting, so if the board is, is conducting that process, we'll want to make sure that we're mindful of that as well.
Absolutely, sure. Okay, I'm gonna motion that we table the presentations to the February meet. February third meeting, do I have a second?
That would be.
The ninth.
It'll be the ninth, because the actual, that's wrong calendar, so sorry, yeah.
Oops.
We got a date down, so based off the proposed schedule, we'll put forward that first meeting would be February ninth to be the regular.
And we've got a thirty minute time on that, I think, wasn't it? Yeah. Thirty minutes on that, yeah.
Per presenter, twenty minutes to present, ten minutes for questions.
So. Now, is that in your motion?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I believe if it's a tie, the motion fails. So then there would be no presentations at the next meeting. To confirm the roll call, I have Director Reed, Director Pearson as yeas. And then no answer for the other two directors, is that? No? No.
Do you find you do?
Director Sarno. Motion fails.
Okay. Annual end of year update.
So, um, Rachel was gonna do the, the more comprehensive update, so if you're willing to table that to the, to the. February meeting, I can present just as a, as a basic overview and then we can have more comprehensive, you know, anything added into. That, so if you, if you want to do that. So, uh, in front of you, you've got the, uh, that breakdown of the, the emergency responses for, for the year closing out at the end of, end of December. And so, uh, finished with a total of eleven hundred and thirty-three, um, hundred and twenty-two incidents more than the year before, a twelve percent up. Helped pretty steady to almost a third, so twenty-nine percent of our, of our incidents are overlapping. And you can see that the breakdown on average is just over three calls per day. Our station breakdown is about seventy-one percent, our station sixteen, and twenty-nine percent on station seventeen. Yeah, and so, as you, it's more comprehensive, I think we're looking at a year-over-year trend of at least ten percent up over the last, last few years on, on all one.
No, these, these fire bills were actual, did they come in as fire and they may not have been?
So they get, um, they get dispatched and responded to as, as fire events.
Okay.
And they fall, fall under one of that.
So if they, they may, uh, does that mean they may have did dispatches of fire and if there's something else that got decoded in?
Um, those, I think, by the way, the breakdown, I'll, a good question asked for her for sure, but as, as fire, uh, fire type event, so different than, different than an alarm, not an alarm call.
Selective, they're trying to dumpster fire to a structure.
Correct.
Then that overlapping is what seems. Yeah. Yeah. Wow, it's good thing they got two stations.
And that, then technically, so does that mean the minute that, that one unit is paced at any time? If that call is still open, then there's another, uh, call, does that, does that mean it overlap?
Yeah.
While there's still, while that call is still open at any point?
Correct, and I think there's actually even a time window, I'll have to, we'll have to look at that, that we, that we look at. Within, within, uh, within a few moments of even from the closing time where we look at that, that unit's unavailable. Unavailable for that, for that response. So we'll have to, to look at that, where that, where we put the, the time piece into that.
Other questions? Any marching numbers? Yeah.
Director Reed, if the board would like to see the full presentation from Ms. Gonzalez at the next meeting, would the board be open to motioning to table the presentation to the next board meeting?
Do I have a motion?
I so move.
Second?
Paul's second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, consent agenda. I would like. Over the year-to-date budget. For, uh. James Vincent group to present and then we can have discussion.
The, um, so it's sort of the pay bills, the year-to-date balance sheet, and I'll call them the one financial presentation.
Okay, okay, so we'll, so basically.
Everything except the.
Except the.
Sorry.
We'll, we'll prove the minutes and then go forward with the rest.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay.
Well, so financials?
Yeah.
So, um, uh, as, uh, as you were with Kelly's departure, Kelly had kind of been a primary source of doing that, doing the financials for us and putting together financial report on packets. With their, with their departure, we entered into some work that we're doing with James Benson already, like they having access into our code books and doing that, so they. Helped by stepping up and, I was like, by a little more on the chief's part, but taking care of putting together the financial. Port and the packet course for the many years, so that was included in the packet and, um, on this, uh, you gave it.
Yep, all right, perfect, thank you. Good evening, uh, President, members of the board, I'm Gabe Bolger with, uh, your good. Um, Gabe Bolger with the James Vincent Group, my office is partner, Ben Foss is here. Um, and so what I really want to do tonight is kind of focus on more going over the style of our financial reports. Um, you know, and kind of why we include the things that are included within the report. Kind of point out some of those things from a board member's perspective on really where to kind of look at these, if you're gonna look at anything. These are the places to kind of look at, I know this isn't always the most exciting thing, uh, that, that the board has to do, but it's probably one of the more important parts, so. Um, all of our financial reports, your financial report starts off with just kind of a cover page. Um, and that cover page gives you, you know, what is in there. Um, and then we always kind of cover some key highlights, uh, some key things, uh, variances from budget to actual, um, why those are there. I mean, just kind of give you that high level overview, so if you're gonna look at anything, that's the number one first place to look. Um, and report is that, um, those kind of that key point section. And obviously, because we were involved in budget development for twenty twenty-one and, you know, kind of coming in at, kind of, at the last year, not a lot of analysis has been done. Other than just pointing out some, some key variances that we noticed. Um, then we go into the balance sheet. Um, and that gives you the summary of your assets and liabilities. Um, and we always do a year-over-year comparison, um, because we want to kind of show you how are we performing compared to last year at this same point in time? Now, for the most part, you know, our, our tax revenue comes in at the same, same amount at the same time every year. Um, our expenses kind of go out around the same time, fire districts are very cyclical and, and their financial processes, so we don't. Expect to see much, much change year-over-year unless we're between purchasing new assets or, you know, we, we've got a change in cash position or. We've taken on new debt and things like that, so where you'll see kind of some of those variances from year to year, so this is a good report to look at. Um, and, and kind of again, when you're looking at it, folks, the top part there is your, I don't know if everybody's familiar with the balance sheet, but. The top part's your cash on hand, obviously we have our impact fees accounts, which are restricted funds, those are only used for, uh, capital asset purchases. Uh, we have our general fund, which is our free cash, so to speak, our restricted cash. And then we have basically the cash or the, the cash balances within, um, FPBA for the volunteer pension fund. And that's also our restricted fund. Um, moving through the balance sheet pages, we go to, um, a summary of reconciled cash balances. And this report is really just showing you how the financial statement ties to the bank balance. Um, and so when you look at it, your clear balance is what the bank says you have. And then the unclear transactions and then the register balance is what said, which your book says it has. Things you want to be cautious of when you're looking at that, what you'll typically see checks that are unclear. Uh, but if you start seeing large deposits carrying over month after month after month that's unclear. We usually don't see that, you know, usually when we take a deposit bank, it hits your account the same day. Sometimes you deposit at the end of the month, which you can see has happened here, it may not hit till the next banking day, which is in the new month, so. That's something to look at on the reconciled cash balance report. And then we go to your profit and loss budget versus actual. And that's really where it's showing you your performance to budget. Um, for, for this year, we did a total, you know, just the whole year presentation. Next month, we'll actually develop it out to be, you'll see a monthly budget as well as a year-to-date, and obviously the January report will still just be the one month. But as we go forward, you're gonna see how we're performing on a month, on a monthly comparison of budget as well as year-to-date, as well as then see where you're at to your annual budget. So you kind of see in those benchmarks as we look across. Um, kind of continuing back through the pages, profit and loss makes up the next couple of pages. Then, uh, we just kind of include a little graph that shows a comparison of revenue to expenses. Um, and then despite the way this may look, the legend down here at the bottom is the pie chart, not the bar graph. So the, the bar graph up top is just income and expenses, the pie graph down below is your percentage of expenses by type. That's typical, we see with, with most fire departments, career fire services, you know, seventy to ninety percent of. Costs or expenses are in personnel and, you know, if you look last year, we're at seventy-seven percent of our total expenses. Um, which is, you know, from a, as a percentage of expenses is, is on the better side of things, we're coming to some departments. And they've got ninety percent of their expenses going to personnel. Um, and then those are, those create some challenges as personnel. and they've got ninety percent of their expenses going to personnel, um, and then those are, those create some challenges, as personnel, uh, personal expenses fluctuate. The next page is a monthly disbursement report, and that's just so you can see all the transactions in and out of the bank accounts. And all this thing, so again, that's another good one to look through, ask questions. We'll make sure next month we make print it, you know, landscape, so it's a little bigger, so you have the magnifying glass to see it. And then finally, the loss report is kind of again, I said in the beginning, there's two things to look at, the one's the summary page, the last one's the, the cash flow. And that gives you a twelve-month rolling cash flow now, and so you can see how your cash position has changed throughout the year. As well as the other thing that includes is if you've had, like, like, for example, this year we had line of credit usage, and so it shows the line of credit usage as well, that's helping bolster that cash position right now. So just for the board standpoint, just little kind of highlights here, you know, total revenue last year was, was four million, uh, one thousand six fifty-nine. Um, so it was seven hundred thousand over budget, both basically planned reviews, permanent revenue, wildland revenue, and grants attributed to that, as well as impact fees. But it's important to note, although we're seven hundred thousand over budget on revenue, a hundred and seventy thousand of that is impact fees, which don't help the operational side of the district. Um, and then when we look at our expenses, our expenses were four million sixty-two thousand, which were actually eight hundred twenty thousand over budget, so. Um, we did see, obviously, we had revenue, you know, to cover that overage, um, actually, we, our cash position did go down about a hundred and seventy thousand for fiscal year, or sorry, calendar year twenty-one, um, but if we didn't have that other revenue, it'd be a different, different scenario. So with that, I'll have to answer your questions, you may have.
Well, I think I'm gonna have to look at that before I have.
Yes.
I love to.
Of course. Yeah, if, you know, feel free to, you know, reach out to chief and get, get in contact with us, we're happy to sit down with any board member and kind of go over and answer any questions. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. So.
See.
Go ahead.
Let me ask you.
Yes.
Engine sixteen, service call, Cleveland Avenue and Fourth Street, Mount Twenty-One Ocean Four, respond on Wellington Tac Two. Engine sixteen, service call, Cleveland Avenue and Fourth Street, Mount Twenty-One Ocean Four, respond on Wellington Tac Two.
The whole amount, this can't be right, though, because this isn't.
No, no.
Total, yeah, the total salary numbers are three point one million.
Of the total amount, but that's not the same percent that we come up with. Yeah, is it?
Yeah.
Is it the same percent here?
Yeah.
This of the, of the total four point one million?
Yeah.
Four million one?
Yeah.
So, what I was gonna ask of you, talking about when we get further into the year and you're doing the monthly reports. When you show the percent of budget, will that be percent of the total budget or percent of where you should be for that point in the year?
So we do, we do kind of two things, we show, again, we, when we develop our budgets, um, we're talking, the budget's already developed here, but there have to be some changes. We'll look at a creating, we'll create it as a true twelve-month budget. So we've got three pay periods in that month, or we get three pay periods, we know typically, although this last year and a half, I'd say our wildland seasons have not been typical. But we typically know when there's more likely to be wildland employment, so, so if we're budgeting for wildland revenue, we'll budget for the wildland expenses in those months. Um, so we want you to really look at, how are we performing, you know, from a monthly budget standpoint? How are we performing from a year-to-date budget standpoint, and then we'll also give you the total percentage of where we're at, so if we're in June, it's easy math. You know, we'd expect to be at fifty percent of the budget, and we'll give you that percentage as well as where we're at as a percentage of the total budget. So you'll have kind of all of those parameters to look at when you're assessing how the budget performance is going in twenty twenty-two.
And, and recognition that, like, as you said, some things are cyclical and seasonal.
Correct.
So, you know, we expect some expenses to be at higher at different times and lower at others.
Correct, yes, like quarterly insurance payments, you know, to kind of example, it's a thousand.
So part of this four million one thousand dollars is actually part of the impact fees, but we, if we take that out, which we should, as total revenue, because we can't spend that.
Correct.
Then that, that changed our percentages somewhat, as far as total, um, what we're spending on, um, on payroll versus total expenses.
So, so the, the, the percentage of expenses, that graph is just looking at our expenses, so, um, it's not looking at the revenue side.
Oh.
So if we spent, we spent a total, you know, uh, basically, uh, four million, looks like four million, you know, sixty thousand is our total expenses for the year. Um, of that four million sixty thousand, the personnel costs are three point one million, which is the seventy-seven percent.
But if we do the, if we do, um, if we do, um, expenses as if we do salary and expenses, total compensation of, as a total percentage of revenue, we really can't use this.
Yeah, if you want to see what our, our wages are as a percentage of revenue, yes, so that's, that's a little different, so we're looking at, we've got actual total revenue of.
I guess we just take out.
Take out the hundred and seventy, so really at three point eight million in revenue that's non, non-restricted, non-impact fee revenue. Um, and with our personnel costs here at three point one million. Personnel costs is in at eighty-two percent of our total revenue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's the only, um, it's its own revenue, it's actually, it's not, uh, the disposable revenue.
Not restricted.
Not restricted. Yeah.
And one also thing to point out on the cash flow, is we back out the restricted revenue on the cash flow, so when you're looking at the cash flow on the last page, you'll see, you know, we ended December with a hundred and thirty-five thousand, if you look at the balance sheet, that total is actually one point eight million. But we back out everything that's restricted, we really want you, the cash flow, to show you what your operational cash on hand is, and how that's doing. Correct, right, yeah.
And that, last one, I think seventeen one.
Yeah.
It's in portrait here, but it, it, you can send it out in, send it out to the individual landscape. Yeah, it's better this way than that, but it's up there, it should go down to see then, right?
Now, it's usually help revenue will be going this year.
Correct, I think we potentially have one, one more payment right, right in the range of that.
Yeah. Full intent.
Yes. Back in the budget, we didn't.
Yeah. Any kind of a ballparked goal of what you tried to look for, and you guys may look at this as some of the differences of of overtime as a percentage of total wages that you shoot for.
Um, I don't know about as a percentage of total wages.
I mean, is that, is that something that's a metric?
So there is, like, just we look at, sort of looking at maybe, um, staffing, like your staffing level, on whether you're gonna decide if you're gonna have a staff over that, and then use that over staffing to offset, um, overtime. And the other metric you can look at is sort of looking at, you know, your approximation of amount of days of overtime that you're gonna look into as a, on a monthly basis type of thing. Um, the other side of it is, and we've had, uh, we've actually had some discussions about how we're tracking many things, because we can look at, say, for instance, over, uh, the wildland overtime, and where we may be doing a good job of flagging that in our staffing system to show the deployments of overtime, are we flagging it so that when we have a backfill behind overtime? that we're flagging that as well so that it falls in the wildland overtime, or is some of that actually being captured in sort of our unscheduled overtime, which, which, um, may just look like it's just staffing overtime when we're here, but maybe it's directed to wildland. So, so those are just some of the things that we have to do a little bit more of a, we've asked those questions and we're not quite sure yet to, to dig deeper into that to make sure what that is, but, so there are some goals that, that you can look at on that and where that breakover point is from cost of an employee plus benefits versus cost of overtime. And there, there's a tipping point where it's cheaper to use overtime until you get to the point where you're overworking employees, then it creates more need of, you know, safer, those type of things. So, um, and I don't know if you can talk about it, if there's a typical kind of a range number where we look at sort of that salary number range, that low seventies to.
Yeah, there's not, there's not like a set percentage out there, or, you know, or a benchmark, because frankly, a lot of factors go into o- overtime budgets, you know, what's, what's the constant staffing model? You know, why are we burning overtime? Are, do we have an abuse of the leave system? So you really have to kind of monitor all of those things. Um, and, and then determine, as Chief just pointed out too, if we, if we don't have staffing issues, if we, you know, it's, it's reasonable usage of, of PTO time, um, and we're still incurring a large amount of overtime, are we just growing to the point where that overtime is now costing us more than hiring a full-time employee? Um, I will say, just, you know, looking at having a hundred thousand, you know, roughly overtime on, you know, basically three million in total payroll and benefits cost is a pretty low number. Um, especially because we believe there's some wildland coverage overtime included in that number. Um, and so, um, it's something obviously that we want to monitor and, and we're going to develop the reporting into, into twenty twenty-two to be able to track that better and understand if our overtime is, is going. Um, but it's not an area that we see, you know, seeing a hundred thousand overtime on, on this budget.
Pretty small percent.
Exactly.
And I suspect if you're able to, you know, extract the actual wildland out of there, it would be much smaller.
Yeah, and I don't know, I don't think it's fifty thousand or so, we might be talking seventy thousand instead of ninety-five thousand, or we may be talking eighty-five thousand, it may not be. But it's hard to tell for now, trying to figure out, you know, if we just kind of did a cursory look of when wildland season was and when we see people deployed. Are we, are we flagging it well enough that it also gets captured in our payroll system so that they get, they get delineated into different boxes? So that it captures that one.
Yeah.
Yes, like, like you said, go and take your time and then, you know, we just.
Can we explain any more accent so it sounds?
Can we move on, or do you have something specific you want to look at, Steve?
Like you kind of said, if you need to reach out to us after the board meeting, by the way, you should reach out to us.
Yeah.
You don't have to just do it right now.
Okay, then, uh, let's move on to the chief's report. I need a motion to approve the paid bills, reference check register, yearly date credit and balance sheet.
Excellent move.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
All right, I've got a, a couple items for you that I'll, that I'll update on, uh, probably the same real quick. So, um, you know, I, I want to thank these guys for, for helping us step in in a, in a time that we, we needed to catch at the very end of the year to make sure we made payroll. Um, they're, they're picking up on a couple of their items for us to, to help with, um, making sure we had the accounts payable and things we need to finish at the end of the year and as well as some of the employee things. So, uh, the W two's and ten ninety-nines, uh, get, get done in time and help us on that piece of it. So, I appreciate that, great, um, great staff and work through, work through challenges of, uh, being able to connect into our systems and do that part of it. So between, uh, our staff, um, our ICC contacts and kind of the partners we had around there got us into systems and be able to, to be able to get through and, and work through and, and get our payroll done on time with, uh, doing, we're just now finishing our second line payroll and one admin payroll. Uh, so a couple of things to work with from there. So, um, out of that and, um, shared with, um, with a couple of board members, but um, a couple of the things that we're looking at from a prospect, process piece to streamline a couple of these things, um, are going to continue to work with them and have discussions with, uh, employers' council about a process for realigning our payroll onto a, onto an every other week payroll cycle. So back onto a fourteen day pay cycle where we would look at doing payroll on every other Friday and then that allows us to process the payroll uh, in the middle of the week with the current system that we're looking at. We have, um, unaligned payroll, if you will, so we're being lined payrolls and admin payrolls and just the extra staff time that goes along with that and the extra work that has to come from there. So, so, um, from that piece of it, the other, one of the other process pieces of, that we've started to put in place and will be finishing up here shortly is moving into using bill.com for our accounts payable. And that moves, moves us away from the, the multi-step of entering bills, uh, correcting bills and then doing paper checks to print signatures and that, and it actually gives a, a bit more of tracking authority so that, um, we can use the electronic system of scanning, scanning invoices and invoice that in, into the system. Allow somebody to overview that and then gives multi-levels of authority. So, the chief would have to authorize the bills and then those that are ready to sign would come to all the board and utilizing electronic authorization to do the signatures and then the checks go and get paid from there. So, um, it opens the door for more options for, um, ACH transfers of payments, less actual paper checks, if those are set up or secure process from that, um, opens the door, um, if we so choose to, to start to do, um, credit card receipts. Uh, we have a high demand of those that come from the, the, the permit side of that. So, allows us to look at systems to put in place that allow us to do that on a user basis. So, a couple of things that would actually streamline that process going through from there. Um, we have, uh, we do the, of a cell running a call. We had a, had our newest firefighter that started last month, Dylan Radford. And he's on B shift now, so he's been working with his crew here and, um, super excited to have him. A couple of the things that, um, that we're working with is to, um, we're, we're kind of behind the curve on recognizing new hires from doing badge paintings and swearing in and going to look at, um, hopefully next month's um, board meeting, looking at a time to be able to catch up on some of those silicon and, um, hope to invite at least our newest hires and some animators to do badge painting, do swearing in, catching on some of those. So, um, kind of renormalizing some of those type of things. So, um, the, um, uh, we, we were looking to hire two firefighters and the other one that we had had ready on the hook, accepted another job offer as a full-time paramedic, uh, somewhere else. So we lost him on the mix, but, uh, we are, uh, we are on the process because we did get a notice for one of our firefighters that's going to, going to a bigger home agency where he lives, is going to be leaving at the end of the month. So, um, we're going to kind of expedite the process of doing a, a recruitment announcement for firefighters. So, and as I shared before, we're going to look at, um, doing folks that are qualified firefighters. So, have their firefighter one, that has my awareness and opposite E and T, hoping that will kind of streamline our process of looking at candidates that we can move through the process and go from there. So we'll be doing that. Um, very shortly during the posting, we're going through the editing of that and looking at the timeframe of those, um, knowing when the, these, um, larger departments are doing their academy hirings that they tend to start at the latter part of February. If we have anybody else in the mix, we expect, um, that we might hear from them soon if that's coming. So, looking at trying to do something that we can get a hiring going so that we have, um, folks in place, um, by no later than the latter part of February to, to bridge the gap from that. And then, um, we'll, uh, we've, we've just had discussions on, um, whether, whether or not we've had our part-time firefighters and they've been filling some shifts for us, but figuring out what that balance is to make sure if we're in a place where we need to potentially do recruitment to, to evaluate bringing on a few more part-time firefighters that can help us in these little windows where we've had somebody leave, where we have the shortages. Um, again, to that question about overtime versus, versus, um, hiring in a smaller agency like this, it's really hard to deal with that one loss and the, the, the folks that are qualified part-time employees have helped us bridge some of that, um, minimizing those. But that, those are kind of the, the highlights for the, for the month there. Um, so we've got, got through some, um, changes. And Rachel, you know, glad to be able to invite her back for the last days on the, on the fifteenth. So we're hoping to have, have her here, little, have her here live in person, please. Appreciate all the work that she's done for us and I wish her luck going forward, but, um, don't have her virtually and we'll have her personally.
I have a question.
Yes, um.
I was just thinking about this the other day, we really haven't, with, with everything that's been going on, how is the fleet, the stations? I mean, we've kind of put that all on the back burner at this point. I know we had to replace a motor in, in one of the engines and.
So, well, I can speak to a couple of things, uh, Chief Doherty oversees our facility stuff for us. I mean, we, we, we've, we've had a couple, we've had a couple of minor issues like with the roof of seventeen with the wind stuff coming up. So, you know, we have to have a more of a, you know, more serious discussion about what that looks like and go over. Um, just she goes well off that we've kind of been able to repair on, do some patchwork on that. Um, from a fleet perspective, we've had, um, we've, we've had a, a couple repairs that had to happen sort of the tail end of the year. So we had, um, some, some major work done on our, um, inch and sixteen, sixteen is the one that P A V did the work on and then we ended up having the radiator after that. And it was separate. So we ended up, ended up in a spot where the radiator went on us with a, not being able to find a, another radiator out there. So it was uh, manufactured by a radiator company, manufactured new radiator, of course, and now back in service. Um, we have, uh, fortunately, again, we've gotten, we've got Lieutenant Delft that has, has some high-level knowledge of decent mechanic stuff and has been able to to diagnose things for us and help us along the way. Um, even when it came back, we ended up with another minor issue with the air compressor and spent some time figuring that out. So, um, you know, through, through parts and, and, uh, some of his, some of his time and, and skills, we were able to get that back. So we've got uh, back on there. But, um, we do acknowledge that, you know, our, our, our fleet is getting older and so, you know, we've had some, had some costs that came in at the end of last year that, uh, whether they are a result of deferred maintenance or whether the result of just sort of the age and mileage starting to catch up on that.
Yeah, and I know we're on a really tight budget, but some things are just going to have to get done.
Yeah.
We're going to.
Absolutely.
Yes.
As you shared one of the early meetings and just having those discussions, it's, um, there, there is longer lead time on parts, longer lead time on actual manufacturing of apparatus. Um, and many of the agencies are sort of in that same place about looking at their replacement schedules and deciding if they need to, to escalate anything just based off of timing to get, to get things rolling. So, so, um, facilities or anything else, Chief?
Um, yeah. Yeah, and then just on the, one other thing on the fleet side, I think having that reserve that we bought from level one was a huge. Um, in retrospect, it was a huge help, um, because we've, we've been used to it a ton, even with, um, and really what that allows us to do, it allows us to to address those even, you know, minor maintenance issues on a regular basis because we can, you know, we can move all of the operational gear from one engine to the other. And then, you know, the, you know, frontline apparatus can go to the wash bay to, you know, have like, for, for example, right now, it's, uh, the fuel filter was just replaced and then it turned out that the new one was bad, but then starting to get another field filter, um, but once we get the check engine light back. So it's just little things like that that we're able to address on a regular basis with having that reserve apparatus to be able to serve us. Yeah, so that was in retrospect, that, that's been a huge, um, blessing. Um, but from a facility's perspective, um, I, I guess I would just, you know, keep everyone aware that I guess my, my biggest concern right now is that potential structural, um, crack over at seventeen. So there's a, there's a, um, some separation between, um, you know, the addition and, um, and the pre-existing building. And so there's been some, um, you know, there's been some, uh, I guess some scheduling and some organization around trying to get a structural engineer over there to look at that. But, you know, that can be anything from like, hey, this is normal and don't worry about that. To like, hey, this is a major, you know, this is a truly major issue. So we don't know yet. Um, until we have a structural engineer to, to look at it, tell us more. Um, but then, yeah, there's a lot of deferred maintenance things that, you know, we're just not spending money on and, and I, and, and I, um, feel that prick, you know, in whatever part of my body that happens to be pricked that particular day as far as just little things, you know, whether it's like replacing exterior lighting or repainting, you know, curb stops or, um, you know, uh, regrouding, you know, rocks around the outside or, you know, um, you know, a ton of different things. We've got, yeah, we've got, uh, garage door openers that over at seventeens that are, you know, out of service. We've got final events that need to be completely, um, refurbished. So, um, you know, Ashley was a huge help and she and I sat down five weeks ago or so and, and worked a lot of those items into, um, you know, uh, our improvement plan for you know, the coming years, you know, just trying to get some dollars around, um, what some of those things are going to cost and they're not, um, they're not small dollars. Right? So there, you know, there's a lot of, um, you know, everything from, I mean, I know we think of appliance type things, sometimes like those are little things, but you know, those, you know, those aren't cheap either. So there's, uh, yeah, there's quite a few, um, even like, you know, painting types things and like, like you mentioned, they know the, the folks out there seventeen who are awesome as far as getting all those root repairs of the, the, you know, so we're trying to make use of the resources that we have as far as, but I mean, realistically, those guys are roofers, right?
Right.
They're not plumbers, they're not electricians. As much as I like to use them as much as possible with those capacities and we do, but there's that level of like, at what point are we kind of? Right, you know, but they really aren't, you know, professional plumbers, professional electricians, professional roofers, et cetera, and that type of thing. So the best we can, we, um, you know, we're, we're trying to stay ahead of everything and making sure that know, that we can preserve the, all the facilities we have the way they are now. But we know that, that we're putting off things that will need to be taken care of and when, when it comes time to pay the paper, we'll have to pay.
Have you got the community to come back yet? It's been a Monday, Monday morning, good morning, random email check-in, um, and occasionally it's, there's been a couple, a couple of different things and we, we feel like we're down to the, then they're, they're, the last piece was their back-end reassembly with parts that they didn't have as they're finishing the reassembly and just trying to figure out, you know, they're taken off the other place where the parts that were, uh, you know, damaged and gone out, you know, as a result of the accident that they didn't realize that they didn't have and so we felt we're down to the last part except for just some pieces back together, but it had gone through and then, you know, there was a supply chain issue with suspension parts and steering column that took a while, but once I got, got it back together and they got it into back in, and, you know, back in the frame and then rechecked it again. There was one minor little thing they saw, so we looked at that and finished the body stuff and paint and put it back together. And then so there's just some parts that they didn't realize, body parts they didn't have and so we're tracking them down and so, you know, do for, do for checking again, so, yeah.
Been a long, long road.
And to supplement, um, what Chief Doherty had to say, one of the things that, um, we're working through with Elder Construction is a feasibility study. They're going to come out and do a facility analysis for us, or they've offered to come out and do that to help us prioritize. Is it going to be more cost-effective to invest in a significant amount of structural repairs or do we need to prioritize uh, new construction or rebuilding a station? So they're, um, going to come out and evaluate our stations and help us put together uh, a plan that would be, uh, the most cost-effective approach to take. So we're not just, you know, making structural repairs to a building that's not salvageable. Um, they'll kind of help us determine, you know, what, what is salvage, salvageable, what isn't salvageable and help put together a plan to execute those in a, the most cost-effective and efficient way possible.
Yeah, we've had trouble with that route away from day one. I mean, the wind, it's, yeah.
It's the wrong direction or the right direction, I guess. Yeah, I think the wind must just really. Uh, we had, yeah, so we had the one big one event, took a small section off and then, so we, uh, looked at it, it was probably, uh. Sort of, you know, three, three, three sheets. So we picked up a bunk and got the stuff to do it and. Guys, the guys got up and repaired that section and then the, the subsequent one, a few weeks later, the bigger one took off. Another portion of that similar part and it was still, so I think we're still in the same bunk of shingles, but the next one was. You know, five, five sections or something like that. So.
And that, did you notice the possible structure?
No, that started, that they noticed it a little bit more. So I think if you look at where that, that western, the, the western edge where the addition goes on from there. Right where, you know, kind of runs through the middle of the, right through the middle of the exercise area in between kind of restaurants and then runs across the. The station from north to south or south to north, however you want to look at it from there. But. There's, you can, you can kind of feel it in the concrete, just a, you know, a little bit of dip. And then when you look at it from the outside, you can see that there's. And there's a, there's a crack in the concrete and then inside of it, there's, uh, just carries a few cracks that you kind of walk along and see a little bit of a crack in that. All of the separation in that part of it. So, um, it's definitely, you know, how long it's been and, you know, with that swale that's farther to the west that. You know, this probably been more settling that's happening through there. So to that, to that point of. Do you, you know, do you add on to the fourth add-on? Do you, or do you repair that part of it? Or is that, is it, was a bigger discussion about what, what the longer term?
So, can we, is that, is that an insurance claim?
I, I, I don't, I don't see that, 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 no, well, the wind damage. Could potentially be for the roof, but I think we, we, we would really evaluate would be because of claims that we've had and because of other things.
Yeah.
The amount of that and whether, what our deductible is and those type of things versus just.
Yeah.
The roof, it's time, it's time, it's time to, time to do a, you know, re-roof, at least a portion of that roof for that. That northern portion and just do all that. Or do we do that?
Yeah.
Just that, that section that has shingle versus the. I think it would be our last choice would probably be the insurance and do that just because whatever that total cost. And again, it goes to bigger, the bigger piece goes to how much we want to spend to do that if we think that there's something else that needs to be done. Yes, agreed.
Okay. Next item of business. Regular board and pension meeting calendar designated posting, posting location for twenty twenty-two.
Eighteen is the, basically the staff report on that. And then, um, eighteen and twenty will include the. The schedule of the meetings as well as, um, staff put together a, a little more comprehensive of kind of calendar items to go from that. So. As you see and as Ashley pointed out, there's a tentative, um, work session date. Uh, twenty-third, um, in February, I think it, and then there's another, I mean, uh, tentative work session in September. There's not the rest of them. That they're going to be scheduled, uh, for meetings and. The key thing, I guess, for a board would be in, um, the, the important part of this. You know, from the staff recommendation ties in with, you'll see the recommended motion on the bottom for a language piece, but. It's really, um, really reaffirms the board's, um, previous. Direction of designating our website as the posting location for the notice. So that's, that's kind of what we're looking at from that piece of it. Um, you can change meetings and do that as needed, but the posting location for that as that comes is. Has been previously.
As long as we do this, as long as it's on the website, then that covers anything and don't have to do it each time.
Well, we would still post each.
No, we would do it, we would, as long as it's on the website, as long as we make an additional here.
Correct. Yeah, this, this allows the website to be designated as the official posting location.
Yeah, you don't have to have three locations. So does anybody have any issues with any of these dates? Then, all motion to adopt the district's official website as the official designated notice of meeting location for twenty twenty-two. And approve the presented calendar for the twenty twenty-two regular board of directors and volunteer pension board.
One second.
All in favor? Okay. Anybody have any other items?
I was just going to ask Everett a little bit of sort of what's going on in your world with. With what? I know that's sort of a loaded question, but. Um, so.
Approve the table, please.
In regards to going into the new year, we're anticipating a hundred percent review or supplemental plans for the wastewater facility plant. In March, I believe. So I'll start working on those reviews. I believe the water treatment plant is. Three to six months behind that. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but I'll be seeing those come across the desk and, you know, sometime this year. Uh, the next two weeks, we'll be wrapping up the final, most of the final inspections for the high school for them to take. Leadership and or start moving in, uh, furniture and stuff. And then there's a few other small projects, um, still early in the year. Typically, uh, January, February, we wait to see most contractors kind of wait to see how. Economy is going and stuff before we get a whole lot of plans, but little stuff here and there, so. Yes, that'll be, that'll be, there's some pretty good review on it, yes. So. Yeah, let me know if you guys want to take a tour of the high school. I'll, I'll be over at five at next week and the, like, next couple of weeks. So let me know.
Okay.
Thanks.
Look at my calendar. Thanks, Everett.
So all the water treatment plants, their plants, have they got a contractor, is it city?
Um.
Where they at?
They've got a design crew and they're, and that's, uh, through this whole process, they've been. Uh, submitting, uh, like thirty percent, sixty percent, ninety percent, um, design phase. Um, they're trying to. Negate their expenses as much as they can with any surprise for big issues. So they've got a design team in place. I, I, I would assume, what was your question?
I just wonder where they're, they haven't got a contractor.
I believe they do through the designer. They probably, yeah, that should be outlined up, so.
Okay, well, they've got, they've came all the ways in. I mean, just to get to that point, I'm sure.
Yeah.
That's a big deal right there.
There's the others, there's five buildings that they're total out there plus some basins. I think two of the buildings are existing, two or three, and then they're adding a couple, we'll be doing add-ons. It's, it's a big process and then.
Is the envelope, are the land gun changed? Are they adding land? Okay, it's not going to be within.
They're working with an S.
I was curious about that.
From the treatment facility, I would, I shouldn't assume, I guess I'm asking. One of your biggest concerns would be, uh, the chemical side of it, Everett?
There's, there's a, there's a review and there's a concern there. Um, they, they have to meet containment and quantity storage. Restrictions and they're doing that. Um, with the biggest concern out there is methane gas from the facilities, but their, their review. Uh, firm has, has filed in pretty good with NFPA requirements that NFPA is pretty strict and has a, a, a good. A little review process and, and yeah, so this will be fire alarmed and, and gas monitored. Buildings, um, due to their construction.
Specifically for methane gas?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay, three of the, the influence for the, the intake buildings will be monitored. For gas. So that's probably the biggest.
Wow.
Fire hazard concern out there, secondary view chemicals, but they've got containment rooms and quantity restrictions for them that. So. And the building material, they're, they're doing concrete from all seven, which is great. Um, limits they need for sprinkler.
Okay, wow. Okay, thanks.
Okay, I have a question about the, uh, proposed meet and greet on February third. Um. That isn't anything that comes at any cost to the district, is it?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that. And. So, um, since we don't have another meeting before then, what, what is the time and what's the format?
For the meet and greet?
Yeah.
So we'll be posting that as a work session. So weren't, there's, aren't any action items. We're inviting the current board to come meet with the, um. Proposed candidates or the people that are interested in running for the election. It's a social gathering mostly. For the board, current board to get to know candidates and for candidates to get to know the current board. Um, learn about special districts and, um, find out information about the election. So it's mostly a social gathering and information session. It will be, um, that event, um, we'll have it at Sparge Brewing from six to eight PM. We have two other events that we're working on planning that are not at a brewery. Um, we have the ballot placement. Or the ballot drawing that we're planning on doing like another social gathering, but here at the station, that'll be a smaller one. And then there's a, the candidate forum as well that we're working on coordinating the logistics. Um, with the, probably the Wellington Chamber will be hosting the forum. And so we're just working on, um, finding a date and location in the event. We do have to conduct an election where we would hold that forum.
So when will you be posting this information?
The, the work session, the candidate information.
Yeah.
Um, it's all up on the website now, including the, uh, work session. We already have that posted up there. And in your, um, candidate packet, on the, um, introduction letter, there's information in there. And then. Also, you, you'll see a tear sheet on the front of those, um, election manual packets. It's important for candidates to fill those out as they pick up the packet, even if they don't plan on turning in their self-nomination form. So that as we, um, lock down the logistics for these, uh, social events, we can update people that have picked up packets. So we have the information available on our website. We have some preliminary planned, um, social media posts and, um. Working with the, the town and the chamber to help communicate that information out to the community as well.
This is all a really big switch. With the last election, there was nothing. There was no PR. So I just, you know, it's. Well, no, I'm not sure anybody even knew we can. Need, need for applications or candidates. So it's, it's, it's all this kind of. Big step up in the world. So.
That's probably drill us.
Probably, yeah, yeah. So, okay, well, all sounds. Good, just. Keep, keep us posted.
Once the, um, official call for nominations is posted, well, you'll start seeing more frequent communication. Uh, via email and on the website and on social media about our election. So you can start. Collecting self-nomination forms as of January one, but your legal posting call for lot nominations can't be done until January twenty-third. I don't know why they set the deadlines like that, but. It's strange.
Okay, well, thank you for all that info. Does anybody else have any questions? Comments on calendar items, girl, back of the package?
At the next board meeting, we may be making a small adjustment to the agenda for some of the, uh, the ceremonial aspects that we were requesting. We, um, may move presentations to the end of the agenda instead of the beginning so that some of the, the people who were recognizing their family can attend and. Be present. Um, unless the board has any serious objections to that, we'll probably shift presentations to the end of the board meeting instead of the beginning.
Would allow the opportunity rather than looking at doing badge pending or swearing in at, say, four o'clock or four ten to do it at this time.
Yeah, some people who have to work might be able to make it. Okay, sounds good. All right. Next board meeting, February ninth. So, if there's nothing else.
Director Pearson, were you the second on that? Story. Thank you.